Good evening, everyone. Let the June 2020 Brookhaven Borough Council meeting come to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America. Stands one nation under God, indivisible, just as for justice.
Mr. Mayor, do you have a list of deceased?
Unfortunately, I do. Let's all for a moment of silence for our recently deceased Brookhaven residents. Kathy Essiff, Nicholas Spildiner, Mary Jane Misunuski, Edward Connor, Angelo Marcela, and I hope I get this right, Marion Meere-Legley-Legley, which is now Yatino's mother. And God bless them. Thank you.
All right, folks, let's jump right into public discussion. Anyone for public discussion? Let me unmute off. Anyone from public discussion? Going once, going twice? No one for public discussion, okay? Let's go to the solicitors' report. Mr. Wills?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Everyone is safe and their families are safe. They're safe during these very challenging times. The issue I want to bring to everybody's
Hold on, Jay. Jay, 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 hold on, hold on. Jay, you have to unmute yourself. Sorry, I had to mute everyone because there was too much background noise. You should be good now.
Can you hear me now?
We can, sir.
Great. All right. Good evening, everybody. A couple of things on my agenda this evening. Number one concerns the state of the Delaware County judicial system. Today, June 1st, was the date that the emergency judicial order was scheduled to be rescinded. However, last week, President Judge Kevin Kelly extended the judicial emergency through July the 31st. What does that mean? Well, most of the court system, the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas and the Magisterical District Courts, including the Brookhaven District Court, will continue to remain closed to the public again, except for certain limited exceptions. I was somewhat surprised at that, given the fact that, again, Delaware County, we're scheduled to come into the yellow phase this Friday, June 5th. I expected the judicial emergency to be lifted at that time. That did not occur. So again, the court system will continue to be closed again for very limited exceptions. What does that mean for us locally here? We were scheduled, again, later this month for a hearing on the preliminary injunction for the property at 3607 Victor Avenue. This has already been continued two times. We're scheduled for a preliminary injunction on June 18th. I suspect that case, again, will get continued for a third time. So again, it's somewhat frustrating, but we have to deal with the courts and certainly the public safety is their first and primary concern. So the wheels of justice will continue to grind. They will just grind at a slow pace. All right, second issue I have concerned the Brookhaven Glen Development. This is the age 55 restricted development off of Edgemont Avenue. The plans have all been signed off, the land development plans signed off by the council president, the engineer, as well as the chairperson of the planning commission. So the developer is next going to be required to obviously have those plans recorded up at the Delaware County Courthouse. Again, given the fact that the courthouse is going to be closed, that may be a problem for the developer, but that's his problem, not our problem. In the meantime, I will continue drafting a developers' agreement and improvement security agreement, as well as an agreement for the escrow and payment of professional fee. So I will continue drafting those agreements and I'll have them available later this month. Third issue we had, or subject matter on my agenda, concerned a subdivision and land development application, as well as protocols and procedures when we obtain a land development and subdivision application. We had not really had a formal application on file in the borough, nor did we have any submission guidelines. So in the last week or two, I prepared and drafted a formal application and submission procedures for all subdivision land development applications. I think this is a more orderly way of handling those particular applications. I provided a copy to our Assistant Borough Secretary Matt Koppel so that in the event we have additional applications, we'll know precisely what to do. Next item on my agenda concerned Carmen's. Again, we finally got an order from the court just last month indicating that the conservator has been granted approval to order sale of this property. That order was entered on May the 8th. So technically, the property owner has 30 days, if he is dissatisfied with that order, to file an appeal to the appellate courts of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So the timeline is ticking up until June 8th. If no appeal is filed, at that point, the property will be listed for sale. Next item on my agenda, we had last week, we were given notice of a slip and fall accident, a pedestrian slip and fall accident on Edgemont Avenue. Again, Edgemont Avenue is, I'm sure everyone is aware, is technically, it's a state road. It is owned and operated and maintained by PennDOT. The borough has little, if any, maintenance responsibilities for a state highway. So I put our insurance carrier on notice of our position, as well as placing the carrier on notice of a potential claim. And I suspect if there's any liability here, it's going to fall with the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania and specifically PennDOT. I have also corresponded with the police chief and the fire chief, whether they had any potential reports on this particular accident that apparently occurred in December of 2019. Again, we have no reports whatsoever that an accident actually occurred at that particular time indeed. Next item on my agenda concerned Dunkin' Donuts. Again, this is a minor land development application on Edgemont Avenue there. The property was initially an old Wawa. I've spoken with the owner or developer today. Again, he has to have his plans recorded with the Delaware County Courthouse. And likewise, I will be preparing a developers' agreement and an improvement security agreement as well for that particular land development process so that can move forward. Finally, in speaking with the council president, I believe the borough is going to consider recalling a number of our furloughed employees beginning Monday, June 8th, which would be subsequent to the moving into the yellow phase as proposed by Governor Wolf, which will occur this Friday on June 5th. So I will be preparing various furlough recall notification letters that will go out on behalf of the mayor and the council president. Other than that, Mr. President, I can report general progress and will be happy to entertain any questions council may have.
Mr. Wills, regarding Delco, going back to the yellow phase, what does this do for our remote meetings?
Uh, well, that's what we need clarification on, is exactly how many people may be able to be in a public room altogether. Now, it's my understanding with the yellow phase right now, it's limited to 25 people.
And our council room could hold, I don't know, 100, say?
Yeah, I would not be comfortable unless that number is expanded, and I'm going to try to get some clarification on that. But right now, the idea we moved to the yellow phase, we could have an indoor public gathering, I understand, of no more than 25 people. In my opinion, that was still insufficient to hold a borough council meeting that's also opened up to the general public. I suspect, again, based on the few meetings I've attended during the months of January, February, and March, that we will exceed that limit of 25 people. So we will still need to continue to hold our meetings via teleconference, via Zoom, unless that number is expanded. And again, if the number was expanded, we'd still need the safety protocols in place. Everybody would be required to wear a mask. Everybody would still be required to sit a minimum of six feet of social distancing. So there are still safety protocols that would have to be in place if that number right now, which I understand is set at 25, even if it is expanded, we'd still have to have certain safety protocols in place where we'd go back to hold our regular public meetings at the council chambers.
And I would assume that we would have to go off the capacity of the council room, not, you know, for example, I mean, you could fit 100 people plus the council engineer, et cetera, et cetera, all the personnel. So we're probably not going to go back to in-person meetings until we're green, I would assume.
Uh, yes. And again, unless that number is expanded, or, again, perhaps we would try on a trial and error, I don't know how many people, and again, that's something we'd have to look at, doing the square footage of the room, how many people we could comfortably get in council chambers room, assuming we are all spaced out a minimum of six feet, as required by the CDC and the Pennsylvania Department of Health.
Okay. Mr. Leslie?
That occupant load is posted in that room. Tell Janice to look around. It tells us how many people are allowed in there.
Janice, get that for us right away. Just kidding. She's muted. Janice, you're muted. Go ahead. I'm sorry. Hold on, she's still muted. I'm going to have to yell to the other room. Hey, Janice, unmute yourself, would you?
Just hit the volume button, it'll come off.
All right. I got, I think I got it.
Get any of that. You're muted. Go ahead.
Okay. Harold Hampton had a question about the submission procedures for subdivision and land development. He wanted to know if we could add subdivision and reverse subdivisions on this form that I have a copy of. You know, this is what they put together, Mr. Wills, and that was the question. Can we make sure it also applies to reverse subdivisions?
Yes.
Because that's what Harold asked us. He gave us a note about that and we forgot to mention it earlier.
Somewhat an issue of semantics, Janice, but for purposes of practicality and clarity, I can make sure that we supplement that with the word reverse subdivision as well.
Yeah, that was Harold's request. I just wanted to make that known to everybody because I just realized it. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Thank you. Just going to do it. All right. That's all I had about that. Okay.
Y'all set, Mr. Wills?
Yes, I have no other comments or issues to address the borough council.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, unmute yourself. You've never sounded better. Still talking. Mike, you have to unmute yourself.
All right, how about now?
I love Zoom meetings.
Start from scratch.
I love them. I'm nervous.
I have, you don't want to hear what I'm saying. First of all, tomorrow is mostly all of it snow. Primary election day, the polls open up at 7:00 a.m., we close at 8:00 p.m. Voting will be held at Coburn Elementary for all six precincts. So pass, if you voted already a charter in the second precinct or the Brookhaven Municipal Building, the sixth precinct, tomorrow you'll be voting at Coburn Elementary for at least the primary. Now, you brought up about the mail-in ballots. I didn't think that was going to be a workable situation, and I still don't, but if you sent it in a mail-in ballot, you don't need to vote tomorrow. But if you got one today or tomorrow, it's too late to mail it in. Unless, if you get it today or tomorrow, you can take it to the courthouse, or we have the bins at the Coburn Elementary School, we can drop that ballot into the bin.
If I mail in ballot, I can fill it, a mail-in ballot, you can fill out and drop off at Coburn tomorrow.
If you get your mail-in ballot today or tomorrow, you can drop it off at Coburn in the box.
Okay. Now, answer this.
Totally different setup.
If you signed up for a mail-in ballot, can you still vote in person?
Yeah, as long as you don't return it.
Right. You can do provisional, yeah.
I received mine Saturday, you know, perfect, great timing. So, and I got mine just in case. I didn't know how bad COVID was going to be and whatnot. I prefer voting in person.
Well, they probably want to see you there anyway.
I just wanted to clear that out because there was someone on Facebook that thought that if you got a mail-in ballot, you literally had to vote by mail, which made not a whole lot of sense. But sorry to interrupt you. Go ahead.
That's okay. So that's about the primary. What else we got? Just another reminder about the 2020 census. If you haven't done so, it's not too late to do it. Go on to www.census2000.gov and fill it in. It only takes about five minutes to do. It does a lot for Brookhaven. It gets us funding. It gets us funding for the schools, the hospitals, the fire department. Also gives us a number of seats up in the House of Representatives. So with that, just a couple of other things. Lastly, we all talk about the COVID-19 yellow stage coming this Friday. I'm sure not, I'm not sure I believe it's still coming Friday, but I'm hoping for it. But this should open up a lot of the things in our municipalities. And I'm not as sure if it's going to loosen a number of restrictions to a certain level that is going to make everybody happy. But I truly believe that we're still a long way off on the green stage, but we still need everybody's help, I think. And Chief Curtin said something earlier today in a text to all of us. You see people bustling around the supermarkets and the stores and driving up and down, you wouldn't think that there's a virus that's out there. And again, I see so many people out there without their mask on, people standing side by side, shoulder to shoulder. And if we're going to get out of this thing, we need your help. I don't want to go back to red. But anyway, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief Montella?
Good evening, Mr. President. I forward you my copy of the May 2020 fire report for Brookhaven Fire Company. We had five fire incidents, 12 non-fire, 19 calls for mutual aid, and four drills, for a total of 40 calls for the fire department for the month of May and 225 for the year. We had no loss on structure or contents for the month, and no firefighter or civilian injuries. Our manpower for the month was 40 calls. We averaged 14 firefighters per call. We were in service for 461 hours so far this year, 2,786 personnel hours. Our training sessions, we had four drills, 26 firefighters, for 126 hours of training for the month, 1,008 for the year. We responded to following incidents in Brookhaven Borough. We had two building fires in the borough, 532 West Brookhaven Road at Stonehill Ford Apartments, it was an oven fire, and 5200 Hilltop Drive, Building B, we were there for an electrical problem. We had three auto accidents in the borough, one at Bridgewater Road and Creek Road, another one at the 3600 block Edgemont Avenue, and another one at Edgemont Brookhaven Road. We assisted Chester Township Fire Department on a building fire at 2500 Concord Road, which is the Haven Memorial Funeral Home, and another building fire on Ninth and Townsend. Assisted the Chester Fire Department on a five-alarm church fire at 906 West Ninth Street, and also covered the city of Chester for seven hours, involved some 911 emergencies for them as well. Brookhaven Fire Company had a COVID incident involving 12 firefighters at the fire at the Haven Memorial Funeral Home. All personnel had proper PPE done and no exposures did occur. All the incident activities were logged for the people that were involved. Brookhaven Fire Company transported 14 COVID-positive patients to the hospital in the month of May. EMS has only transported one COVID-positive patient in the last two weeks, which is a really good sign. So that really dropped off for us. And our monthly training, the last two weeks, we only transported one COVID-positive patient, and it was not, was not in the borough. Our monthly training was vehicle extrication, pump operations, and hose deployment. And our ambulance report for the month was 113 ambulance calls, 64 transports, 75 dispatches ALS calls, 35 dispatches BLS, 77 local calls in Brookhaven's local, and 36 mutual aid. And the ambulance has responded to 643 incidents so far this year. And that'll conclude my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. Chief Curtin?
Good evening, Mr. President and everybody else. For the month of May 2020, the Police Department had a total of seven arrests. Six were adults, one was a juvenile, a total of 18 charges. We had two referrals to the youth aid panel. There was five thefts, complaints total. Two were retail thefts and three were otherwise taken from property. There were two DUI arrests. We, a couple of significant incidents or arrests that we had, on the 11th, Officer Subers was down Triple Run condominium, condominiums for a drug complaint. He, his investigation led to the seizure of some heroin, marijuana, crack cocaine. We took a little bit over $2,000 and a vehicle were also seized, and so on my report, a little bit more details. We also went to, on the 12th, we had a continuous place on West Brookhaven Road where we go for domestic incidents a lot. We responded there again. The offender was taken into custody. He was subsequently booked and upon release, returned back to the house against the judge's orders. Obviously, we found him again and he was booked again on additional charges, including the not compliance with bail. So the officers are very diligent in doing their job and calling up and communicating well amongst each other. We had 301 business or security checks for the month, taking us over to over 1,500 for the year thus far. Traffic enforcement, we had six motor vehicle citations issued. We had six parking warnings. 18 motor vehicle collisions were investigated. We had no training this month. Officers are still doing their high visibility patrol to decrease criminal incidents, and departments still engaged in doing all the drive-bys for various reasons for borough residents. We like to be a part of that. So Officer Kyler is still on leave from the June incident last year. We're still undertaking our protective measures relative to COVID-19. And as mentioned earlier, the furloughed police officers will be back to duty and serving here very shortly. And that's my report, sir.
Chief, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
The Walgreens robbery, I know you sent me an email or a text saying that they were going to be sentenced next week, but I guess that's going to be called off, I assume.
No, sir. It's still on for Friday the 5th. They have certain allotment of scheduled dates for sentencing and the like, emergency PFAs. So that's going to go on Friday afternoon. It won't be open to the general public, of course, only limited and needed people.
Okay. We'll be able to find out what the sentence was, won't we?
I will let you know because I plan on going.
I think, want to see these guys go away for a long time.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Well, that's Chief. I guess Chief's done. Thank you, sir. All right, I have a couple of things I need. We have some minutes to catch up on. I need a motion to approve the April 2020 council meeting minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion's carried. I need a motion to approve the April 2020 workshop minutes.
Make a motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion's carried. I need a motion to approve the May 2020 council meeting minutes.
Make the motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried. And last, I need a motion to approve the May 2020 workshop minutes.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion's carried. I have an item regarding the office manager position. We, at the workshop, we voted to advertise for the position. I believe we received nine or 10 applications. Those applicants will be notified today or early tomorrow for their interviews, which will be held Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday of this week. And due to the urgent need for this position, Inspector Secretary duties will be attached to the office manager role. We will meet in executive session, which we advertised. We sent the advertisement today. It should go in the Wednesday Daily Times, to meet at noon Saturday via Zoom to make the decision on which applicant we will hire for that position. And we will attempt to get that individual to start as soon as possible. As I put on Facebook, we opened the parks, I believe it was on May 26th. And a quick COVID update. Assuming the COVID cases last three weeks, which I think it's safe to say, Brookhaven has roughly 12 current active cases. We're still stuck on three deaths. I believe our total is 53 to date. And just to note that all three of those deaths occurred in one house, which was institutionally owned, on one street. What else do I have? I think that's all I have until, for now. That's it.
Mr. Hall, I have a question for you.
Yes.
Um, since we opened up the parks, does that mean that Coburn's fields are open now, or are they going to remain closed?
Well, it depends on what you mean as far as opening the fields. Group sports are still out.
Yeah, I don't mean that. I mean, if, you know, if somebody wanted to, I don't know, kick a soccer ball around on the field there, or, you know, at one point we were going to have the playground open for basketball. I don't even know where that, where we ended up with that.
Playground open for basketball?
Yeah, remember, we had a discussion like, I don't know, this summer, this summer?
That was a while ago, and I believe that the school district shut that down, if I'm not mistaken.
No, they were supposed to be open during the weekends.
Well, I can say this, basketball is the absolute last sport you want to play during a pandemic.
Okay.
This is, this is.
That's fine. I just, I meant in general because.
Contact sport, you're constantly moving, you're sweaty, it's close quarters.
I understand that.
You have light protective equipment, almost really no protective equipment. You don't want anyone playing basketball during, during a pandemic.
Okay.
And I'm sure I don't want to single out basketball. There's a couple other sports, you know, hockey, when I, but as far as it affects us, I would advise against playing basketball. Were you specifically talking about Coburn's fields or all of our fields? Like Durkin Field and Scott Park? Is that your question?
No, my question was Coburn's. I mean, I know the other fields are open now. The barricades are still up over there. I just didn't know if.
The barricade, the barricades are ours. They should have been taken down, actually.
Okay.
There was probably a miscommunication, but.
Okay.
I thought Coburn, that field actually is Pendaco's responsibility. Isn't that the property of the school district?
It is, but we asked them if we could close it.
Correct. They never, the school, the school district never closed Coburn. We requested that the lot be closed because there was, there was just too many people in close quarters there. And not, not one family. There are multi-family gatherings, there are kids playing in there. But it is backup.
Thank you.
Yep. Oh, and I should also mention, I almost forgot that Mr. Wills touched on it, that Borough Hall is opening up for in-person services on Monday, June 8th. All patrons must wear a mask. And the only area open to the public will be from the vestibule doors to front doors to the window. We will have hand sanitizer provided. No contact with the public should be made anywhere but that window. So the inspector's office is off limits. We've already notified the employees of that. So if you have a permitting issue and you have to deal with Matt Koppel, you will have to pay him or contact him at the window and make arrangements by email or phone, as you have been doing. But all business for now, until we go, Delco goes green, should be made at the window. And we're still getting questions regarding rentals for the hall. Rentals for the hall are down. down for the foreseeable future. It would be a miracle for able to open the hall until we go green, and perhaps even beyond that. Green status does not mean full open, by the way, folks. Green status still has restrictions. Doesn't pull us out of a pandemic. So council generally agrees. I don't think we got any objections. There will be no rentals for the foreseeable future. And that's all I have for now. Ms. Leslie?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. First on my agenda is thank you to council, the mayor, the fire department, the police department for participating in our Memorial Day parade around the borough. The parade was very well received. So thank you, everyone that participated. Recycling, we've had a lot of trash complaints and mixing up trash with the recyclables. I know everybody is home and cleaning out their homes, their garages, their attics. But, you know, please be mindful of not putting the stuff in with the recyclables. We do have plenty of pictures of residents that have all kinds of stuff in the recycling cans. And also make sure if you bag up your trash, that it's not more than 30 pounds. Also to the fire department and police department, keep up the good job with all the COVIDs and doing all the little parades for people. It really makes them feel good. Also, emergency management. Steve Schultz is keeping up with everything in line, up to date with the COVID-19 supplies. Initial projects are being summed up for COVID in the grant portals and will be supplemented as the incidents continue. Steve also had two meetings with Pima. Steve is reaching out to other repetitive loss property owners this month to see if there's any other homeowners on the repetitive loss section of Chester Creek Road interested in selling through a mighty mitigation program. And he said that they plan to have a meeting the third week of June if everything goes well. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Ms. Leslie. Oh, I forgot to add something. Council is aware, we had a pump that's going with their tower up at Borough Hall, so it's affecting the air conditioning. The original estimate was $1,600. Harry got back to me and the cost ended up being close to, I think, $8,600. So obviously you can't go without air conditioning at Borough Hall, so we did go ahead and order that pump. And we're going to rebuild the old pump to have as a spare. That'll cost another $500, $600. And I believe that should be completed by week's end, if I'm not mistaken. Forgot to add that in my report. Ms. Wiki? Hold on. Ms. Wiki, unmute yourself.
I have a question for Ms. Leslie. Normally, in September, we have flu shots, the regular flu shots for the seniors. Is there some way we can schedule that? Because I really think we need to have it as early as we can this year. We usually have it in municipal center, and it's a big help to the seniors. And I think especially today with them being homebound more, we get it done because they need to get this anyway, because this year's regular flu is supposed to be bad, worse than usual, from what I hear. And I'm just asking you, because we've scheduled it before, and is there somebody that we can get? We usually get the, the doctor that does our health.
Right, but Donna, are you the one that usually schedules that?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's Don. I'm sorry. I thought it was Denise.
No, I don't schedule that.
That was Don Jones.
It was Don.
Oh, it was the secretary.
Donna Denise, so I can see her. We, we can, we can look into that. When do they
I can ask the office, I can ask the office girls to do it. You're right, it was. Okay, I'm, I got mixed up. But I really think it might be, I can ask the office, because I, I'll, I'll talk to them tomorrow. But I mean, I think it might be a good idea if we try to schedule it early, because I think a lot of people with the other vaccine questions about COVID, I think maybe by having the regular flu, it'll give some people peace of mind. And we always had it at the municipal center and in the gym. It does, it only takes a couple hours in, you know, on a morning. So I mean, I think maybe it'd be easier, they wouldn't have to go traveling to their doctor or somebody else, because they just come right to the municipal center. It's just something to think about, because maybe we can have, I can have the secretaries contact, when they come in next week, have them contact our doctor, and he'll be able to, the doctor
Generally, how many do we get? Does anyone have any idea?
About 50. We get about 50. We get about 50.
I would only worry about, I would only worry about lines and a COVID rebound in the fall. That science thinks could happen. It's like it's gone by any means, but
I don't think COVID will be going, but the main thing is it's the regular flu. Regular flu could be just as bad for seniors as COVID, because of their other health. So that's my question. Can we schedule it? I'll contact, you know, Natalie and the other secretaries when they come in.
Well, that would be the one thing we, we'd have to make an exception of.
Yeah, I think it'd be helpful.
Sorry, you know what we could do? I'm sure Henry's got it in his book. I'm sure they booked advance. We can, I'll check the book tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, that's great. Thank you.
Denise, you were done, correct?
Yes, sir, I was.
Ms. Wiki?
Yes, I do have the bill list for June. For the general fund, it's $33,239.56. For the sewer fund, it's $4,241. We're grand total of $37,480.56. So I will make the motion that we can pass the bills for June.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Carrie?
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wiki. Mrs. Fuchs?
Thank you, Mr. President. The ordinance committee met via Zoom on Thursday, the 21st, to discuss the welcome packet, the animal control ordinance, and the garbage ordinance. So we, I'm going to be printing off, or actually I'll email everyone, the animal control ordinance. I'd like to pass it at the next meeting, or at least talk about it the next meeting and pass it at the next council meeting. It's just minor changes regarding the chip requirement that we originally had in the ordinance. So we removed that and made some other changes. So make sure you all get that animal control ordinance. And we're going to have some changes to the garbage ordinance. And the welcome packet, once that's finalized, I'll make sure that everyone gets that. It's a great packet for new residents. It's going to be very, very helpful. You're all going to like it when you see it. Also, the church vaccination clinic is scheduled for May of 2021, and that's all of my report.
Hey Donna, let me ask you one. Donna, we, we talked about this several weeks ago. We talked about the, the open fire pits that happen, and I'm not sure if we do or we don't, but maybe the fire marshal can address that.
Yeah, we will be talking about that.
Yeah, does it, does it need a screen?
We, we, we need to modify it. It's just the open, it's the open ordinance right now. It's not even, doesn't even talk about fire pits at all. So we need to add some language to it.
Okay, maybe the fire marshal can answer. Okay, thank you.
What exactly is the issue again?
Well, we've had not a ton of complaints, but I've had two or three complaints over the last several weeks about people with fire pits and flames are going all over the place. And of course, they're exaggerating. But do we need a screen on top of them? Don't we need a screen? Are fire pits allowed?
Are they allowed in the driveways? Yeah.
Well, there are wooden decks too. That was the other argument.
Deck, yeah, you're right.
You're telling me that someone had a fire on a wooden deck?
We will be working on that.
Well, actu- actually
My goodness.
Actually, Terry, my, my brother-in-law, about five or six years ago, he had one on his backwood deck and burnt, burnt the bottom of the deck off.
I'm actually frying a turkey right now in the, in the Well, you know how it turns out.
Yeah.
So, so get, get back to this, this, the screens for, for the pit fires. Does our ordinance now say you require screens?
Our ordinance doesn't even talk about fire pits. That's the problem.
Uh, because I would, I would be, really, I would object to screens over a fire pit. Have you ever seen my fireballs that I have in my backyard? I mean, as long as you know how to control a fire. Yeah, if you, if you have, you have a, a good surround around it, or whatever you, what do you, a ring or whatever, you should be fine. A screen's ridiculous. Can't have a good fire with a lid on it.
I think it depends on the type of fire pit that you have. The little portable ones need the screens.
I see.
In my opinion.
No, I'm not talking portable. I'm talking about the actual, you know, a pit with hardscape.
I know. No, I know what you're talking about.
I'll be sure to attend that meeting.
We have major work to do on that ordinance, so.
Well, I'm right there by just a propane one. Donna, are you making any progress with the E-code? Sure we can get us a deal.
Hector, what were you just saying?
With, with the ordinance, are we making any progress with that E-code, or is that all stopped?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
The E-code.
That, we had to stop that because we couldn't, actually, we could do a Zoom meeting now. At the time that we canceled, we weren't even doing Zoom. So I think we need to get something scheduled with that, with E-code. We had something scheduled. We had to cancel it because the, the coronavirus came along. So we could
I had a few people ask about it, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thanks.
Uh huh.
Well said, Mrs. Fuchs.
I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pappas.
Oh, thank you, Mr. President. But unfortunately, my committees did not meet, so I do not have a report.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Vasquez?
All right, we got a long one today. Good evening, everyone. First, I want to start with, there was nothing new with zoning, other than what Janice mentioned to Jay earlier, about the reverse subdivision. The wastewater treatment plant had a pump go down. I believe Charles Catania will touch on that in more in detail later. But we're basically going to have a new pump to replace that, and then we'll have a spare on hand as well ordered, because you can't just not stop taking your, your waste coming into the plant. The next item I have is the sewer machine. So I know we talked about this during the workshop, and after speaking with the lender and the style in which the lease would have to go down, we would be paying roughly, I believe, I think the math was around $6,000, because the interest is already included in the price. So we're talking to Janice. Everything's budgeted already for that machine. We got 80,000, then the excess will come out of the capital reserve. So it would be my recommend, recommendation that we, or I have a motion to approve purchasing the sewer machine, so we can get back on the cleaning of the lines that are all jammed up. If anybody has any questions, please feel free to address them now.
No, it's, it's fine.
Was that your motion?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. My next item, the Shepherd Street project. So after reviewing everything, we are roughly, as of right now, were 80, I think it was around $84,000 owed to the project. The rental just of the steel plates is almost $20,000. And that's literally just us paying for something for the equipment to sit on. And this has just been going to waste this money. So we got, we got around, added 84,000. We could possibly recoup around $24,000 in materials, either the contractor will take them back, and maybe we'll get a credit, or we, I'm sure we could find a use for them as well, if that's not the case. So I'd like to make a motion to cancel the project, get that equipment off the, off this, off the properties right now. And if we need to move forward with a different project, because that's, that $300,000, it's tough enough to crack right now. And
It's actually 300, it's 370. When it was originally voted on, it was 240. When it was originally spoken of, to me, it was 180. It affects three homes, and there's no, nothing against those finding individuals, those families in those homes, three homes. The way it was sold to me, and I will not, I will not put names into this, was that the entire lower part of Shepherd Street was affected. Three homes does not make up the entire lower part of Shepherd Street. I was thinking eight or nine homes. I was also told that there was structural damage being caused. We were, we were recently told there is no water in the basement from this project unless there is a loss of power and there's some pump goes. Well, that's every, that's every other home in the borough that has a sump pump. So it's unfortunate, and we didn't ask for a potential budget shortfall related to COVID and some other matters, but $370,000 for three homes is ripping off our tax base, in my opinion. I'm speaking for myself. So was that your motion? Does anyone have any, any other questions? And Mr. Catania is looking into a cheaper project.
Correct.
Maybe he can touch on that in, in his, in his piece. Anyone else?
That's my motion.
Does anyone else have anything to add?
I do.
Go ahead.
The only thing I'm going to say is based on COVID and the state of our budget right now, I don't think in all good conscience, we could continue with it this year anyway, because we just don't, it's from general fund, we just don't have it.
We don't know what's going to happen.
I've gone through the numbers many times, and we just don't have that kind of money to have for one project. So that's why, I, I think I'd have to agree with you, because for this year, we can't. Now, if you talk about it in another, I don't know, but I mean, this year, for the numbers alone, we just can't, we can't do it. There's no way, we have that kind of money, for any project, I mean, really.
Okay. Anyone else from council?
No.
That was Hector's motion?
I just want to reiterate, I bet I do think it's a good decision to not move forward with that right now. We just in good conscience can't spend that kind of money.
Correct. And it, and it, listen, it's unfortunate that, that we have to eat that much money. And there, there, it was said in, in a recorded meeting, that we were not paying rental for anything until that project started. Now, you know, so a, a good, a good lawyer might, might say, well, once they set the machinery in place and the pads in place, the project has quote unquote started. It's not really the way it was said in that meeting. If we had known we were paying rental on, on, on those items, on the backhoe, on the pads, there is absolutely no way this council would have let it linger. And anyone that wants to see that meeting where that was stated, I can show it to you, because that's what it was said. Council, the last council and the current council was missle by this. We really, we, we were. And you want to talk about fiscal, fiscal irresponsibility. It's ridiculous the way, the way. I never would have voted for this if I knew what this project was.
Yeah, so right now, we're pretty much trying to save face with what's left of the project.
And it's a damn shame we have to eat that amount of money, but it's, it's still going to save $310,000. It, it's robbery. But that's Hector's motion. Anyone else from council?
Just got one question. Hector, when we remove that equipment, we're going to fix the property, whatever slight damage there might be from that equipment sitting on it, right?
Yes, that's, that's an obvious thing that's going to be taken care of.
Sure.
Because obviously that grass is all going to be dead now at this point. The, the equipment's been sitting there, I think, eight months now, so.
Okay.
We'll, we'll, we'll be taking care of that.
Thank you.
Do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Second.
Denise, did you have something? Was that Denise? I don't know. Okay, there, man, carry on.
Did we lose Denise? I don't see Denise somewhere.
Her computer just crashed.
Oh.
I know she was trying to say something. I
Okay, she's trying to get back on.
All right.
All right, let's, let's continue. Let's push that motion to the end to let Denise participate. How about we do that right before public?
All right, very well. Yeah.
Anything else?
Yes, so also Public Works was busy this month. They had, bear with me two seconds. We had one sewer call, 4104 Mountain Vernon. Problem was on a homeowner. The main was clear. The sewer clean on Swiftwater that Vaughn had mentioned, all the way from Victor to Patton. Everything was perfectly fine with that. No, no major issues to report. We di tested and inspected 632 Kenny Lane on the storm, stormwater. We repaired the sewer, storm, storm sewer inlet box on 642 Kenny Lane. We had the Public Works team take care of that, instead of going out to an outside contractor. And they did a great job. Everything looks good there. We had the Public Works team take care of that instead of going out to an outside contractor and they did a great job. Everything looks good there. Again, Public Works, this is just echoing you, opened up all the parks, all the security cameras in the parks that we have. They're all checked, make sure there was no damage during the closure by anybody coming on there. The four swing sets that were removed from Garza Park were reinstalled with brand new ones. The frame and the scoreboard were installed at Sampson or awaiting the install sponsor banner. And also two benches were taken out of service and disrepair. Going to look at possibly either replacing them or having Public Works rebuild them. And that's the end of my report.
You're saying Swift Water is okay to pave?
Yes.
Okay.
I believe Charles has a list.
All right, well, I'm hoping by the time we get to Charles at Swift Waters on there, they've waited, I think, someone told me 26 years.
I gotta double check the list.
Okay.
It depends on how the condition is underneath. It doesn't matter how many years you're waiting, if your sewer is not good, it has to be repaired before we spend money.
Well, Hector just said that we televise.
I know, that's the rule now, that if there's something bad, and we all know that. And I want the residents to realize, we're not spending, you know, good money after bad. We're trying to be very fiscally conservative and by checking underground, we're helping everybody.
The only issue is sometimes when you, we can only check so much underground. So I mean, incidents are going to pop up occasionally, you know, you can't, you can't, you can only see so much.
Sure.
And we can only televise so much because we figure we have another sewer system in our area that we're not even allowed to touch, so. That's also another issue, but. That is, that's the end.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Heller.
I only have two quick things. The technology committee meeting will be held via Zoom on Thursday, 6/11/2020. Hector, we can bring up the E code then, because I know that we're using the technology committee platform to actually discuss that. The second thing and the last thing that I have is that the backstop work will begin the week of June 15, 2020, and they'll be partnering with Public Works to continue and finalize that project. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Heller. And let me add that I think most of us know, for those that aren't on Facebook and whatnot, baseball did shut their season down. And I expect an announcement from softball, I would imagine. Baseball is basically done, which is unfortunate, the shame. First time in our history, we haven't had a baseball season or we will not have had a baseball season. So, and I have a quick banner update. The round three install was done. There are no shortage of mistakes. A lot of special requests for locations, and I think we have 10 or 12 banners that have to be moved, so the installer will be called back to do that. They had a list and they did not follow the list for whatever reason. So I'm getting inundated with messages over that understandably. And I think that's all I have. Mr. Catania.
Thank you. Just a couple of things on my list for tonight. We'll start with the restreet repaving since that was mentioned already. There is a list of streets. We took the list that we received from Public Works, put costs with them under the current situation. We've rated those streets and divided them into two phases. The first phase, the first phase includes sections of Edwards, Conley, Brookwood, North Gray, Sir Galahad, Patton, and Swift Water. I'm going to recommend, I'm going to request that council authorize advertisement of the Phase One street repaving list.
Well, I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, carried.
And also mentioned by Mr. Vasquez was at the treatment plant, they had one of the pumps go down. It was in the, one of the sludge pumps went down. So they had to purchase a new pump at the cost of $711. While they did that, they ordered a second spare pump. These pumps just seem to be a problem with the clogging. And when they clog, they're burning out, so they ordered two pumps, $711 each. And it's kind of a, it's a requirement, it's a necessity in order to run the plant to meet the permit requirements. So that was done already. I guess we would need to counter off to ratify that purchase.
I'll make the motion.
All in favor?
All right.
Carried.
All right, next up I have Whitley Road. There's a storm culvert that crosses underneath Whitley Road. It's an old metal pipe that is in fairly bad condition. The bottom of the pipe is corroded out. I think that we can kind of nurse it through the rest of this year. But what I want to ask council is consider authorizing us to complete a design for the replacement. That way we have a new design on the shelf in case we run into issues where the plate should be, and we'd have to close that road.
Absolutely. Who wants the motion?
I'll second.
All in favor? All right, carried.
All right, sanitary sewer root treatment. The borough has been using a company called Duke's Root Control to place the chemical root inhibitor in various sections of the sanitary sewer. We've been using this for quite a long time and find it very effective in preventing roots from blocking the sewers. It needs to be done every three years under their warranty system. There is a list of lines that need to be replaced and the cost for that is $4,361 and some change. I'm going to ask the council to authorize that re-treatment for this year.
Can I add that that also includes a warranty with that? So if there's an issue or anything, they come back and they take care of that.
So moved.
Janice took the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
All right.
Moved.
I know you have two. Two sanitary, I'm sorry, one is a storm sewer repair at 4112 North Gray Street. This is a stormwater inlet that is leaking, causing some settlement and sinkhole on the sidewalk area. I originally had asked council to authorize repair. I'm going to ask that they do that contingent upon the Public Works Department not being able to complete the work. So what I want to do is, well, I think Dave is off. When Dave comes back, take him, meet him out there, see if the Public Works Department can make the repair that's necessary. And if they can, they can do that. If not, then I would get a contractor to come and make the necessary repairs.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, motion's carried.
Then we have a sanitary sewer street lateral at 30 Trimble Boulevard. This is a sinkhole that developed along the curb line. The Public Works Department went out and ditested the sinkhole and determined that the cause was a street lateral, so we need authorization to repair the street lateral at 30 Trimble Boulevard.
Who wants the motion?
Second.
I don't know what that was in the background, but, all right. Favor?
All right.
Happy resident.
Motion's carried. Sounded like it.
All right, and then finally, we had our escrow release, I'm sorry, we had a request for release of escrow for Pando Properties at 315 West Brookhaven Road. We're going to recommend the council consider a release of the escrow in the amount of $102,220.80. I'm going to let you know that I'll be subject to the testing of the storm and sanitary sewer. I will advise you that my report has a different number. I submitted that report before I had a third, chance to thoroughly review it. The 102, 220 and 80 cents is a correct number.
Can I ask that when we do that, can we do it in the form of resolution so that we have a memorialized form and that we can attach like a copy of the check so that for auditors, we do have at least some paperwork that shows why we're doing it? I mean, it would help from a financial point of view for us. For our, we're trying to improve our paperwork. It's whenever we make a release, I would like to have some kind of paperwork saying council approved it. So if we could just have Mr. Wills with you put something together. Even a one page, it's a one page thing, so we can attach it to our records. And then when we're audited and sometimes audited by the state, at least we have paperwork to make me feel better. Because it's just memorializing what we're doing.
I can prepare.
In this way, we know people got their money back.
Other municipalities, just for a sense of parity in paperwork, I think that is probably the prudent thing to do and we can approve this tonight. We'll simply ratify that with, or memorialize that in a resolution that I'll prepare and port it off to Delilah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay, that was your motion?
Yes.
Who wants it?
I do.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Carried.
And I believe that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles, one quick question. Do we ever get clarification on how that Mariner 2 grant is really the fine money? The $120,000 or $125,000 has to be used? Was it rain gardens?
It's two rain gardens that are to be done.
What do you mean, two rain gardens?
The application that I could find specified two rain gardens at two locations that were basically identified by.
And that's it? It can't be one large rain garden, six small ones?
I think what I would suggest we do, and it kind of hinted on us that was we talked about the Whitley Road project, is we'll send a request, right, we'll send a request to the state, whoever supplied that grant funding, asking them to change the scope, amend the scope of the grant to include the work at Whitley Road.
Is there a deadline on when these funds have to be used by?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you if I remember, when I recall looking at it, it's an extended period of time. It may be 2021. It's, I think you have three years to spend it from the date of the receipt.
That's more interesting.
Okay, so we're probably a year and a half in, I believe.
I think so.
All right, well, that would be good if we could use it for the Whitley Road project, but if not, I assume it could be used, you know, to fix the water issue at Eaton or something like that, but.
Right.
Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
Mr. Leslie.
Just a couple of things. Report. We do have something in writing somewhere that Mary had given me a while back. If we can get into her computer, I'm sure it's there, with the fire pits and the chimeneas. All fire pits, whether it's a bought one or a homemade one, needs a screen to cover it, deflect the embers. And I remember her telling me, and it has to be sticks or twigs only, two inches and below. That is in writing somewhere because she told me it came under the recycling ordinance somewhere. That's why it's only sticks and twigs and we cannot burn anything else. If we can get into her computer, I'm sure somebody could find it in there somewhere. She did give me a copy. With that being said, I'd like to be invited to that meeting that Mrs. Fuchs is going to have, whether it's Zoom or up at the Borough Hall with that ordinance, just to touch on this and get something in writing. I looked in every book up there and I can't find it, but I know it's in her computer somewhere.
I'd like to attend that meeting also.
So we'll get something with this burning ordinance. And other than that, I'm pleased to say that our fire prevention program here in the borough is outstanding as of right now. Thank God. That's the end of my report.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Before we go into public discussion, is Ms. Leslie back? Yes, she's back. All right, Hector, let's go with your Shepherd Street motion.
All right, so basically.
You might as well reread it to Denise.
That's a good idea.
All right, so, say again.
I said you might as well.
He said to reread it to me.
Reread it for Denise. Denise got booted offline.
Yeah.
All right, so pretty much we're looking at a payout of $84,000 roughly. $24,000 in material we'd be able to recover out of this project. So far, we paid, and these are rough numbers because they're maybe a month old now, around $18,000. Just almost $20,000 just in rentals for those steel mats that the excavator are on.
Whoever's clicking their pen, would you silence it, please? Go ahead, Mr. Vasquez.
So, you know, it'd be my recommendation that we cancel this project for this year because right now the funds aren't going to be there. You know, it's going to be totaling $370,000 thousand dollars for the project in total. Now, we might be able to recoup that $24,000 in material. Yeah, either we could use it or maybe the contractor will take it back. I'm sure they'll definitely have a use for it. Same thing goes for the forms as well. We might be able to make use of that somewhere else in the borough. So it was my motion to move forward and cancel this project for this year. And Mr. Catania might have a cheaper solution down the road if it's needed.
We'll take that as the motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
All right.
My motion's carried. Anyone from public discussion? Hold on, let me unmute everyone. Anyone from public discussion? Public discussion going on?
I have something.
Is that Mrs. McGovern?
Yes, it is.
I'd state your name and address, please.
It's Mimi McGovern, 3774 Susan Lane.
Thank you, go ahead.
And my only question is, before the meeting started, there was a little discussion on something that they were going to do for the Sun Valley graduates. So that wasn't discussed. I'm not sure if it's going to be a surprise to them or what and why it wasn't discussed.
Not now. No, I'm just kidding. It wasn't a surprise.
Did you want me to explain it?
Yes, please do, Janice.
Yeah, I would like, just curious about that.
Okay, we had talked about doing something for them and someone in the office had an idea that we could have a gigantic sign, put it in the middle of the walking trail, list every Brookhaven graduate from Sun Valley, put it there, have it all summer with balloons and decorative. People can come, they can take pictures and it'll be some way of doing something different for our graduates. I mean, a parade was suggested, but, you know, we just had one from Memorial Day and other towns are doing parades, so maybe having something that's permanently there all summer, where they could come up and look at their name and it's just something special. I mean, we all want them to have something special since it's such a sad thing that happened with them not being able to really be in school for the last few months of their senior year, so that was the suggestion. And we're going to get a big sign and have multi-copy do it and getting the names of all the graduates from Brookhaven. And then hopefully it'll be here erected before the end of this month.
Okay. All right, my only comment is, I'm confused if it's Sun Valley kids or Brookhaven kids.
It was Sun Valley graduates. That was the whole.
But Brookhaven, Brookhaven residents, correct, Janice?
Brookhaven residents from Sun Valley.
I think that was Mimi's question. Yeah, Mimi.
Yeah, only Brookhaven residents who graduated from Sun Valley this year.
Sure.
Right, so that again is my question. What about kids who are Brookhaven residents that may have graduated from a different high school? Why would we?
I don't see why we couldn't add them to it. Private schools or whatnot, yep.
They're Brookhaven residents and that's what this is about, right? It's not Sun Valley.
Yeah, well, maybe this was just, we just started discussing this.
Okay, and that's fine. I just want to make sure, you know, we can't just, I mean, my suggestion is there's other kids who probably did not go to Sun Valley who graduated.
Sure, we have kids that go to Cardinal Howard. We can add them all.
Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, well, we can make it generic and we can actually get names. We'll contact the schools. It's as long as I have a list of all the schools we need. It's Cardinal Howard and what, Prandy and?
Bonner, probably. I don't know. Who knows?
We'll have to contact the schools to get the names if they'll give us the names of the kids. I don't know.
We'll work it out.
Yeah, Janice, you do know there is a parade this Sunday for Sun Valley.
Yeah, I do know that.
But she wanted to do this in addition to the parade.
Yeah, this is.
It's fine.
It was for, all right, thank you.
Anyone else for public discussion?
I got a couple of things for you, Terry.
I knew you wouldn't let us go home.
No, I wouldn't let you go. If you're doing a school thing, don't forget the Christian Academy and a few, and Northern Christian and those schools.
We'll get them all in there.
We brought the Catholic schools. We didn't bring up the other schools. Number, okay, first one. Uh, number, okay, first one.
Hold on, hold on, Tom, Tom, hold on.
Well, I'm just saying.
I have to mute, I have to mute everyone and unmute you, there's some background, hold on a minute. All right, Tom, unmute yourself, please.
Okay, got, got it. All right, so, uh, a thank you for being physically, fiscally responsible about the Shepherd Street project. You guys usually don't get, thanks for that kind of stuff, so thank you very much for that. As far as question you, Terry, you brought up a little bit about the rain garden money.
Sure.
Definitely was thinking Eaton Park, because we had that water problem.
Yep.
By the playgrounds, if we could figure that out, that would be a great thing with that one. And Mr. Mayor, as far as I understand on voting, if you received a mail-in ballot and you don't get, you can't get it back in, in time, you can go to the polling place and vote, but it's a provisional ballot that you're voting on. It's not, it's, it's not the regular machine.
Janice is shaking her head, no. Janice, unmute yourself. Janice, unmute yourself.
If you have an absentee ballot that you got in the mail today, you can fill it out and take it over to Coburn tomorrow. We have a big box at the entrance to put it in.
No, that's not what I was.
That's what the county wants. It's provisional only, I have to do provisional because I didn't get my absentee. So I got to go in tomorrow and do it, and they'll give me a form, I never got a form.
Janice, what Terry just said was he just received his ballot, but he'd rather vote in person.
Correct.
Because you have the mail-in ballot, you're on the list as a mail-in ballot. So you have, they have to check and make sure that does not get turned in. So when you vote on Election Day, it'll be a provisional ballot on Election.
Exactly, that's what I have to do, because I never got mine in the mail.
So let's, let's be clear, Tom, I can fill out the ballot I got in the mail and dump it in the box at Coburn tomorrow.
Exactly.
Yes.
Terry, Terry, the mayor's waving his hand, he has something.
Mr. Mayor, unmute, Mr. Mayor, unmute yourself, it won't let me unmute you. We'll give you. You have 30 seconds, then we're going to cut you out of the meeting. Hold on, let me try again. Miss, Mr. Mayor, unmute, there you go.
Donna, you helped me out here. Now, I understand some of what you're saying is somewhat true. If you don't, don't have a ballot right now, you don't have to fill out provisional, but you just go and vote.
Exactly.
I went to, no, no, I went to the Election Bureau on Saturday, and I said to them, if you don't get the ballot that you applied for, what do you do? They told me you have to do a provisional ballot during Election Day. That's what they told me on Saturday.
That's because you sent in an application for an absentee, that's why.
Not an absentee, just a mail-in ballot, not an absentee ballot.
When you walk into.
Doesn't matter, doesn't matter, it's, they're both the same thing.
Yeah, but the absentee, you have to have a reason why you're filling out an absentee in a mail-in, you don't.
They changed the law.
Why don't you guys go rumble at Eaton Park over this or something, so, but I, I think I'm happy with you.
Coburn will straighten it out for you.
I'm like a game show host, this is Nightmare Hollywood Squares.
You are.
That stone is the judge for you, he'll straighten it out, trust me.
Goodness. And last, last one is a sad, basically a sad, uh, thing as far as I'm concerned. Since we won't be out of yellow, I, I would assume by the end of June, we're going to cancel the June concert as well. I think that's the most prudent thing to do and safest thing to do.
It's a shame.
It is a shame, but well, you know, if not, we'll just have even better one next year.
How many, how many were scheduled again, refresh my memory?
Originally, we had one for, we made June, July, August, September, we had six scheduled altogether.
Six scheduled, right.
So this will be our second one we're canceling.
Maybe we can get October in.
Who knows?
No, that's, that's when COVID will make its rebound and slap us in the face on the other side.
Slap us on the other side.
Hopefully not.
That was all I had, Mr. Mayor, or Mr. President.
Don't call me mayor yet. He's still breathing, he's still breathing over there, can't you tell? All right. Anyone else for public discussion? No Dan Burke? No, you look like you wanted to talk. Mr. Pizzolo?
I think they're all muted.
No, I think I'm good, Terry. I think the only, I was just going to provide some clarification, but I think all the members of council did that in regards to voting for tomorrow.
We took the long way around, but we got the answer.
Well, we always do.
Yep. All right, someone's trying to join the meeting, but I'll let her in, we're leaving. All right, so with that, hold on, that might be, let me ask them if they want to speak. There might be somebody who wants to speak. Christine, you just joined. Did you have something for public discussion? She must have had the timer on, and she just left. Okay, never mind. All right, with that, folks, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
See you in a few weeks, everyone, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice seeing you.